Evening, welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 School Board Meeting for Tuesday, August 21st, 2018. I'd like to call the meeting into order and ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome back everybody. Dawn, if you could do a roll call, please.
Here.
Louis?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Seaberson?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Samurai? Kelly?
Thank you. I'm gonna start with our mission statement. Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and deliver tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next up would be the approval of our agenda, so if I get a motion to move that forward, please.
Don't move. Second.
Who was my second? Natty? Laura's a motion, Natty was a second. Thank you, any discussion? Hearing none else, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Announcements. On August 28th at 5:30, we'll have a school board work session here in the community room. September 3rd, which is a Monday, is a Labor Day, it's a holiday, the district will be closed. September 4th is the first day back of school for the students. September 11th will be a regular school board meeting at 7:00 PM. September 18th, there'll be a school board listening session. At 5 o'clock, at 5:30, there'll be a school board work session on the 18th as well. And then September 25th at 7:00 PM, there'll be a regular school board meeting here in the community room. As far as correspondence, I've been reported that there is no correspondence this evening. Next up would be communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow-up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Move with regards. No one here for communication to the board, so we'll keep moving. Next up would be the consent agenda, which includes the personnel report. If I get a motion to move that forward.
Don't move.
Lorian?
Second.
Second by Molly. Any discussion? Hearing none else, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next up would be the acknowledgement of contributions, and I'll ask for a motion, a second, to move it forward, and then I will read it. Looking for a motion.
Don't move.
Molly?
Second.
Seconded by Natty. And the resolution reads as follows. Acknowledgement of Contribution Resolution. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the students bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13 that the School Board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $2,150.63. And the detailed background is as follows. A donation of $60 was made to Columbia Academy by Wells Fargo Community Support Campaign for Student Needs. A donation of $450 was made to Columbia Heights High School by George Holt for the prom dinner for 2019. And the following donations were made to the Columbia Heights Eat Up the Debt Campaign, an anonymous donation of $1,500, and then the K Foundation, $80.63. Our total fiscal 2017-2018 monetary contributions to date are $2,150.63. Discussion, comments?
Incredible.
Yeah, thank you.
Good start to the new year. Okay, and that is a resolution. If there's no further discussion, Dawn, if you would, roll call vote, please.
Palmer?
Aye.
Louis?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Seaberson?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Thank you, and thank you for the donations. Next up would be reports from members of the board. Board members will report on board activity since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. I'll go first, because like, all I can really speak to with good memory is, had a chair meeting prior to this, so. And we're back from our, well, you guys were already back from the hiatus of July, but we're back to regular business, so. Laura?
I really didn't do much in the way of school board activities, just talked with people.
Okay.
Yep, lots of conversations with the community about, especially about the referendum. That's it.
All right.
Yeah, similar, lots of conversations about the referendum, and a few now about going back to school and what to expect, but excited to get things rolling for the new year. And a chair meeting before this.
Good. Lorian?
I'll repeat, it's actually been a busy couple of weeks for conversations with our community members, so it's really good to see them engaging with me and I think with the rest of you, I appreciate that, so.
Thank you. All right, next up would be Item B, which is Opening Week Activities. And Xena is kind of our main show for the evening on some stuff here, so get her going.
All right. Chair Larkin, members of the board. I'm here this evening, it's that time of year again where all of us in education get really excited to get everything ready, get our classrooms ready, spruce up everything, and we'll wait for the kids to come, right? So of course Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner. And the core value focus of this presentation is on community, excellence, collaboration, and respect. So I wanted to start off with the schedule for what's coming up in the next couple of week, or this week and next week. We are starting tomorrow to welcome our new teachers and new staff. We've got a great crew coming in tomorrow morning, and that first day is really a community-focused day. So the teachers and staff will be welcomed by the community, we'll tour them around to different locations and kind of orient them to the community. The Thursday for new teachers and staff, really kind of a deep dive into the programs. This is where they learn about their health benefits and how to get onto their computers and access the technology, their usernames and passwords, some of the nuts and bolts, really going overview of our programs in the district. And then on Friday, they meet with their mentor. So we have a meeting here in the morning with everyone together, and then they'll hear from a wonderful student panel that day, and then they spend most of the day with their mentor back in their buildings, learning how, where the copy machine is and where their curriculum is and how to access all of those things. The following week, the whole district is back, so we start off on Monday, the 27th, in their buildings. So many of the schools will be having their morning staff meetings or afternoon staff lunches and kind of going over the vision for the particular schools. Then on Tuesday and Wednesday, we have the whole district together for professional development and convocation, so we're looking forward to that. And then as you can see, the following two days, staff are in their buildings. So I'm just gonna share with you a little bit more of the details of some of those days. So for our new teacher induction, I kind of went over the first, second, and third day with the tour of the community, the nuts and bolts of the district programs, and then mentoring. Then August 29th with District in Service, of course maintaining our focus on college and career readiness, life skills, and closing the achievement gap. Some of the sessions include introduction to some of our new systems, continuing with technology integration and personalized learning, literacy intervention and guided reading. So last year, grades 2 through 5 really worked on a research-based literacy intervention, and we left kindergarten and first grade alone because they were starting with a brand-new literacy curriculum, so now it's their turn for that new learning. And the others will be deepening their skills in guided reading. Different, new math interventions happening this year, and so teachers need to learn about that. Some time for curriculum alignment, so for example, well, you can see below, the height in the arts, the arts folks will come together and make sure that they're aligned, K-12 is an example. Continuing with avid strategies, we recently had a great avid national conference here in Minneapolis, and we were able to send, boy, over 20 teachers or over 20 staff to that, and so they're raring to go, and some of our teacher leaders have volunteered to lead some sessions on specific strategies. I'll just highlight one note, we have a high school teacher teamed up with an elementary teacher to lead a session on note-taking, focused note-taking, so it's kind of, it's exciting to make those connections, and that's one of the things that's really neat about Columbia Heights and our size, is we can get around to all of the buildings and collaborate with one another. Looking for support, learning about English, the needs of learning English learners and students with special needs. And then we're renewing our efforts on data-driven discussions through PLC. So that's gonna be across the board this week. We, I spoke with administration in all of the buildings last week about really monitoring those data-driven discussions and how we'll be doing that. It's exciting. For convocation, August 29th, beginning at 9:30 in the High School Performing Arts Center, and then after that, the lunch at Cordiac Park, which a team of wonderful people come together to put that lunch on for everyone. And then in the afternoon, we'll have two sessions that teachers can choose from, or licensed staff can choose from, so we build in that choice time. Open houses, August 28th at Columbia Academy, and August 30 for the rest, pre-K through 5, and Columbia Heights High School. These are all on the district calendar. And then for the school board members, this, you've received an invitation in your board packet previously, but just a reminder, tomorrow morning, if you'd like to come and greet the new staff, they'll be here at 8 o'clock, but really getting rolling by 8:30, so if you want to arrive at 8 o'clock, that'd be great. So you're welcome to attend that. And of course, August 29th, the convocation and lunch, it'd be great to see you all there. So if there's any questions?
Questions, anybody? Okay, thank you for that. Next up would be the curriculum cycle updates.
She gets a sidekick. She gets a sidekick for her mention.
Mix it up a little.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, of course our mission is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner. The focus of this presentation is really honing in on excellence and innovation. We're here today to present to you an annual informational update on the curriculum cycle. We will not be coming back for governance, this is a informational presentation. I'm here with Tara Tucker, Curriculum Coordinator. In the last few years, Tara has really restructured our curriculum system to make it a very clear, transparent curriculum review process that makes sense, you know, that it's laid out properly for everyone, community is invited to have conversations and give input, teachers across the board have really been excited about the process, and so we're very excited, and Tara's gonna talk with you more about that.
So our curriculum is reviewed as part of an ongoing process, as part of the Minnesota statute, as well as your strategic plan. Sorry, good evening Chair Larkin and members of the board.
I jumped right in.
Our curriculum review cycle is given as part of your board packet as well, so it's more detailed, it's hard to see up there, but really, it's a seven-year cycle, and we focus on different departments throughout that cycle, but we're supporting all departments every year. So as we look at year one, we're really studying and preparing, we're looking at data and noticing what are the trends happening with our data in that particular area. So for example, this year is ELA, we're looking at the data and really focusing in on the novels that we're using. Are we using rigorous texts with our students, are we using culturally relevant texts, so focusing in on that. Year two is really about developing the program, and this school year, we're going to be working with K-12 Science and Engineering. They're still waiting on the, we're still waiting on the state to complete the science standards, it got pushed out a little, so we're waiting on that, but we're supporting the teachers as we're preparing for that process. Year three is implementation, so working with teachers on implementing new curriculum or new programs, and this year, we're really focusing in on our K-12 Performing Arts as well as our career technical education. And then that year four to seven is really focusing in on how are things going, what do we need to update, what do we need to do to make it better? And this year, we will be working with PE, their standards were released last spring, and so we have until the year 2021 to complete full implementation, but we really are beginning that this year to support them with it.
I had the opportunity to meet, to sit in on a meeting that Tara had with these different groups of teachers, and where she presented to them the process that they were gonna go, it's a seven-year cycle, so they haven't been through it in a while, right? So this kind of redefined, refined process, and they were just so excited to know what was gonna happen and that they were gonna dig into and review different texts and that they'd be able to, you know, update their curriculum, and it was just a really great process. So also with our approved curriculum cycle, we always have assumptions, so we use the online Atlas Curriculum Mapping Tool. We review new courses. Special education, gifted learning, and English learners are not separate on the cycle, so if we're reviewing math curriculum, for example, the folks from the Special Education Department, gifted, and English learners are at the table, and so we're looking at general education and all of the specialty programs around math at the same time. We want to make sure that social-emotional learning is incorporated into our curriculum, that of course we're striving for college and career readiness. What are the ways that we can use technology integration that will personalize the learning for the students and be effective? It's part of the Department of Education's standards, and the approved curriculum cycle is posted online, and the curriculum adoptions include teacher input, community comment, and board approval, and we'll show you that process in a moment. And then we always push reading, math, and science as a priority, and as always, the curriculum adoptions are coming in at or under budget.
Xena had mentioned about the Atlas Curriculum Mapping, and we really focused on this last year, pre-K, or early childhood, all the way up to 12th grade, really looking at our online curriculum management system that we have, and ensuring we're updating that information as often as we can. And really, this program allows us to look at our standards alignment. We can go in as teaching and learning, or a principal can go in and pull a report to notice any areas or gaps that we have with the standards and how we're addressing them. We also use it to support ensuring that across the district, if a student is in fifth grade in one school, that they're receiving the same curriculum and the same scope and sequence or at the same time as another school. And then that vertical alignment, so if a student is leaving fifth grade, are they prepared for sixth grade? So we're using that to have conversations with teachers to ensure that we have that vertical alignment happening.
It's gonna be a great tool, just even this week with our new staff coming on board, so say we have a teacher that retires, all of that knowledge and learning doesn't retire with them, it's housed here in our, on our online system, so new teachers coming in can see what their curriculum is and go from there.
And our goal is this year to roll out parts of it to families, so they're able to look up a course and see what is the outcome from that course, what are the different materials used. Xena mentioned earlier about the curriculum development process that we go through, so if an area or department is on the cycle, we really begin with the teachers on collecting that input and data, what's working, what's not working, what would you look for, what are some better things we need for our students? And we look at different things out there, so we, then we move to the leadership team and the principals and teaching and learning and really research what's happening in literacy, what are some programs that are being used by other districts, what are some evidence-based practices we need to look at? And looking through there, we make recommendations, and we make recommendations and bring it to the administrative team to share with them and get their input, and really our goal is to gather as much input as we can throughout this process. After moving that recommendation to the administrative team, we bring it to our World's Best Workforce, which includes families, it includes community members, and we share and gather input from them. And World's Best Workforce is really that stepping stone to looking for a recommendation or approval from the school board. So we bring it to the superintendent and then ask for the recommendation to be approved by the school board. So moving through that process takes time, so we have the first couple of years there to really gather that data and move together with the teachers. So really looking back at last year, we had a lot of things happening. We had an adoption of a new curriculum, Wonders Curriculum, in kindergarten and first grade, and the feedback that we've heard from families as well as teachers has been outstanding. They've been very happy with the selection of books, they've been very happy with the way the curriculum is laid out by themes, so we're excited about that. The next one is the K-12 Science, as mentioned earlier, we're still supporting them with professional development last year, and we will continue this year as we wait upon the standards. American Indian Curriculum has been a focus, early childhood, all the way up to 12th grade, so teaching and learning has been working with VAL or American Indian Specialist to really embed resources in all areas, so teachers have the resources and lessons they need to include it. Last year, we really focused on 912 Performing Arts as well. At the high school, Shelley, our theater teacher, started up a new program there, and it's impressive and amazing, we're excited to see it grow. So we worked with her on really looking at the resources she has, bringing in artists from outside, going out and seeing things. And then Xena had mentioned earlier about the press, the reading intervention that we had in second through fifth grade, that we're looking to expand this school year, and we saw a lot of growth in students when looking at their literacy data from there. And the last one, last year we were excited about was a project Lead the Way. So it is a STEM curriculum that we brought to Columbia Academy, and we brought that first phase in, which was engineering and design and modeling. So we're excited to expand that one this school year, too. So this year, we have a long list of our goals ahead, but really looking at the PE standards and working with the teachers on what are the standards, what are new resources that we need to include to support that? And then press, we're moving to the kindergarten and first grade level. Project Lead the Way, we're bringing in robotics and automation, which would be the second course, so after they've taken the design and modeling, they have the option to take robotics and automation. So we just purchased quite a few robots in the last week. Implementation of Social-Emotional State Standards, which came out last spring, we'll be refining our work with that. We've implemented quite a few of them, but really refining what that looks like in the classroom. Really looking at the arts and preparing, they just had their standards released in draft form, so we're working with them to look at that draft so that we can prepare for when the final one comes out, how does that look in our classrooms that way? We're excited about the math interventions and literacy interventions that will be happening at Columbia Academy this year. We'll be working with some new programs and a new grant that we received with literacy coaches to really improve what is happening in that classroom for core instruction, as well as interventions when students need more support. We have a new American Indian Studies course happening at the high school, so she'll be working closely with VAL, or American Indian Specialist, as well as teaching and learning to start that up. We are working on the literature review, as mentioned earlier, in our literacy courses in 6th through 12th grade. And then we're also excited about the work with career and technical education, and really working with 916 and the Perkins Grant that we have, and supporting that college and career part of it, so supporting them with resources. We recently have put in requests for different resources and have been very positive that we've gotten back from the grant, so it's really supported us that way. And 916 has a lot of resources to help those teachers in terms of professional development as well.
I'll just add that Tara took over the coordination of the Perkins Grant last spring. It's a beast of a Perkins, of a grant, and she's already been approved for several thousand dollars' worth of supplies, and we're in the works of also applying for a lot more to beef up our career and technical education, kind of renewing and adding to it. This is the funding that we got, that, this is the funding we use to get like the 3D printer that we have in the tech ed department and some of those other pieces, so they really help offset the cost of, if you think down in our machine shop and in the wood shop, some of those large machines that need repair and repair and repair, and then at some point need replacing. It's more than one school could fund, and so Tara's reached out and become very close with the folks at 916 who help us to coordinate this grant, and it's just amazing the resources that she's finding for our tech ed department. So it's really, really exciting, looking forward to our young engineers this year.
They've also supported us with a lot of field trips and opportunities for students to go out in the business fields around the area. So last year, our work-study program, where they were able to go to Medtronic as part of that, and that Perkins Grant and 916 helped set that up, so that was a great opportunity for all of them.
So if there's any questions, these are happy PE teachers, ready to work on their curriculum.
They've been working hard.
Are they lifting that bench? What are they? What's going on with that picture?
Not sure.
Anybody have any questions?
I actually do. As far as the state standards for the social-emotional learning, I was wondering if I might be able to either find out where to get that information, or if I could find out what those standards are, kind of curious as to what the state would apply as standards.
Yep, and I believe the state's referring to them as competencies.
Competencies, yeah.
Yeah, and so, I'll be happy to put that in the next packet.
I would appreciate that, thank you.
I also like the access that parents can gain to view the expected outcomes of the curriculum. I think that would be beneficial to parents who are really interested to see those measurable benchmarks that they should or could expect, and probably help them understand a very complicated education system a little bit better, so that's great.
Thank you.
Bill?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, academic return on investment updates. Thanks Tara.
The computer. Good evening Chair Larkin, members of the board. This evening, Director Stenbich and I are going to talk about academic return on investment, the study that we did for this year. And it's, every year, we do take a deeper dive into a program and take a look at how much we're spending on the program, what are the results we're getting from the money that we're spending. So again, Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner, and our focus tonight is on excellence and integrity. So there is no governance question with this, but it's just an informational presentation. So this year, we looked at K-2 reading intervention, and we receive, or currently are funding our K-2 reading interventionists through our AdSys grant. And so that AdSys is Alternative Delivery of Specialized Instructional Services. So it's a grant split up into two areas, K-2 reading intervention and then the 912 Check and Connect. And some of you or all of you may remember, Check and Connect is something we looked at previously. So we will be reapplying for this, this grant in 2019. So that's where the money's coming from currently. So the purpose of the program is to provide instruction to assist students who need additional academic or behavioral support to succeed in general education environment. And so the goal is really to reduce the number of inappropriate referrals to special education and provide that extra support for the students. So our reading intervention staff are licensed in reading, and they do work with one to four students at a time, and you know, as far as our data tracking along the way, progress monitoring, we use a tool called Ames Web to collect that data. They do meet quarterly to go over that information, and so again, that, the funding for that is 100% through the grant. So the student profile, again, we've said that they're K-2 reading interventionists, so they're, it's a K-2 student, and it's a student that's not meeting grade-level standards in reading, so that's our focus student. And then the factors that we're looking at, of course, are student achievement, you know, overall costs, and then our referral numbers to special education, so those are the three things that we're looking at as we're going through the data.
So before we move on to the, as we're moving on to the data, one other note about the student profile is, so we have a reading interventionist at each elementary school, and they have a caseload of about 35 to 40 students that they're working with, they take on more, as many as they can, the teachers do, to really support the students. And as Brian mentioned, we use Ames Web every other week to monitor and measure their progress. Once students are hitting their benchmark and reaching that grade level, they're out, and they go back full-time into the classroom. So the model is during a, during a non-literacy time, they're polled for a brief amount of time for these frequent, small doses of literacy instruction, right? And so once they're making this growth and progress, they're off the roster and new kids come back, come on, right? So this data is showing all of the students, so they may have started in September, and sometimes students need to be in the program, September all the way to June, and maybe even again into the next year. Sometimes students make really quick progress, and then that frees up space for more kids to come on. So what you're seeing on the screen is about 24% of the students in the program achieved grade level. So they were identified as below grade level, worked through this literacy program, made it to grade level, and exited. 11% made high growth, 12% made medium growth, and about 40% made some growth. And then I wanted to dive deeper into, what is the 13.6% making no growth? Who are these students? So I put in, we put a note there at the bottom, 21% of the it to grade level and exited. 11% made high growth, 12% made medium growth, and about 40% made some growth. And then I wanted to dive deeper into, what is the 13.6% making no growth? Who are these students? So I put in, we put a note there at the bottom. 21% of the students were served less than a year because of how I mentioned, the capacity and the wait lists and kind of moving kids through. And of that 13.6% there in the purple, 48% of them began services mid-year, and at least one started in April. So if there's any opening, even if it's in April and the teachers don't have much time with them, they're going to start services for them anyways, just to keep going with them. So that's kind of a breakdown of that, of that data. So looking at the conclusions from looking at that data, really low reading ability can be caused by many factors. Could be lack of exposure to literacy, interrupted schooling, mobility, trauma, and other factors. It's not always due to a reading disability that would require an IEP, an educational, an individual education plan. Identifying, however, and narrowing the number down to about 12 students that, that we saw in that no-growth category, that helps the staff to really hone in on which students may need to go to that next level and perhaps qualify for special education. That's the whole point of this, of this grant. The number of students receiving the intervention were, it was 169 students in the 2016-17 school year. Of those who moved on through the process, three of them were identified or were referred to special education services. So looking at the, the data, we wanted to break down data in a different way as well. What are these referrals to special education and what happens as a result of it? So here, we've got referrals by teachers, and what we're seeing is a really high accuracy rate. 85 and 84% of our teachers who are referring students, so after that process of the reading intervention, the student assistant team, so really looking at different data, 85 and 84% of our referrals do result in a, in a identification as a student needing special need or having special needs. Parents can also refer students, and we go through that same process, looking at data. It's not as, as, from our data that we're showing, it's not quite as high of an accuracy rate, but we feel that that high accuracy rate with the teachers helps to be true in, in who we're identifying and not over-identifying students. So let's talk about the money. The three teachers that are our reading interventionists, salary plus benefits, we're looking at $163,000 and, $163,705. They've all been trained prior to this school year, so 2016-17, there were no training costs. Administrative costs in terms of time and meeting time and managing the grant and whatnot, we calculated that at $5,000 based on the numbers from the business office. Program supplies was $600, and that's all part of the grant as well with the 169 students. So what does that mean, cost per student? Now, this is where we had a long discussion with our special education, special education department and our business office. So for Columbia Heights, the reading intervention cost per student is $1,002 on average per year, okay? But then we wanted to see, okay, so are we saving money by not over-identifying, which is the purpose of the grant? Now, if we were to take all special, the cost to service all special education students in our district, it would be a high number. In fact, you can see, according to the Star Tribune, a 2014 article, on average in the state of Minnesota, it's about $22,000 annually to educate each student with an, with an IEP. But we figured that by the time the students get to kindergarten and first grade, if they're, if they're at a level three or four, they've probably already been identified at an early age, right? Chances are, they've been identified in early childhood, Head Start, pre-K, something like that. So we decided to kind of level the playing field and say, those probably aren't the kids that we're focusing on with this grant. So let's only look at the average cost for love, special education level one and two. And, and so the cost is much lower, $1,726 per year on average to educate those students. And so, which is still a savings, as you can see, the cost for the grant and then the cost for our average special education level one and two student. And of course, the cost for the grant, the reading intervention at $1,002 is significantly lower than that average of 20,000 to 2,000.
And just to clarify that, this $1,726 is the, the additional cost for those special services, not for the...
Not per student.
Yeah, not, not the whole education package.
Thanks.
So our findings, based on the results of the studies, that the AdSys program is meeting, is meeting that goal of not over-refering or over-identifying students in special education. So our recommendations then for this school year is to continue serving the identified students in grades K through 2 with our interventions, which are funded through that AdSys grant. We also had some questions, however. We want to monitor that long-term academic success of the students. So what we'd like to do next with this data is make sure that we're tracking the students who were served in, in the reading intervention program as they go to second, third, fourth grade and so on. We want to see that long-term. So that's, that's kind of a next plan for us in this process. What's really interesting about doing academic return on investment is it brings up a lot of questions that we may not have, on the surface, thought about. So that was one example. So if there's any questions.
Questions?
I have questions.
Go ahead.
Looking at the 169 students that were served, and then you had said that just based on space and availability, that there were some students that weren't served until later in the year. Obviously, we have a capacity issue. We have more students who could benefit from the, the program than are able to receive services. Is there any opportunity for us to expand the program so that we can serve all the students who are identified as having the need?
So the grant will open up again in 2019, and so we'll definitely look into the possibilities of the funding stream if we could, if we were able to get additional.
So that's something, when we applied for the grant, do we identify kind of what our plan is or our program? And so that's the funding that they then issue for that? So we can identify and say, hey, we've been successful. Here are the kids that are showing the growth. We can serve X number more with the additional funding.
Correct.
And I'm assuming you're planning on doing that?
Yes.
Good question.
Yeah, that is a great question.
Any other questions? Okay. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up, informational item regarding a grievance. I will be the presenter on that one. A subcommittee of the school board heard a level-three grievance on July 23, 2018 from Local 710. The committee was made up of Chair Larkin and Vice Chair Severson. The grievance was regarding a staffing change for the 2018-2018 school year. Daniel Honig, Local 710 president, will receive a letter denying the grievance after the school board meeting tonight of August 21, 2018. Next up would be action item. And we have our handbook approval. I thought you were going to get to sit down, didn't you? Yeah, I'll teach you.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board. So the board was presented at a previous school board meeting, information on a new pre-K-12 district-wide Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. So the handbook was created through a collaborative process, including representation from the different schools in the district. And the purpose is really to have alignment in the communication and resource information that we're providing to families. So I'm here this evening seeking approval for the 2018-19 Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook.
We'll start with a motion and a second.
So hope.
Motion by Laura, second by Molly. Discussion, comments, questions?
I have some questions. I enjoyed the presentation last time. I think it went over a lot of information in the, in the handbook. And I know even as a parent, I probably haven't read it cover to cover previously. So I did this time and appreciated the information. I, I think, one, as far as the board, I think we need to continue to look at some of our policies we talked about last time, because your handbook is really guided by board policy as it, as it needs to be. So you talk about alignment, there has to be alignment there, too, right? Can you talk a little bit about how, how this is being communicated to our students and parents? And I know that, you know, obviously, everybody's going to get one, right? Each family will get one. And I, you know, can sit down with my own kids and we can talk about it. It's, it's not something I think that I can hand my kid and say, hey, you know, seventh grade child, why don't you go ahead and read this so you know exactly what's expected of you in school? So can you talk a little bit about what I'll, maybe I'll call the implementation of the handbook?
First, I will be collecting signatures. I want, I'll be collecting signatures from every school that every single family in the district did actually receive this book. We're not mailing them home, we are handing them to families, is the plan for now. If we're not able to hand them in person, then we'll talk about how they're getting home. But they're not going home in backpacks. I'm asking parents to sign a receipt that they did receive it, and I'll be collecting all of that information. Because we do want, we think it's really useful and helpful information and provides, provides a good overview. The date of the implementation, ideally, it would be open house and at our first conferences and whatnot. Logistically, I'm working really hard to get it back from the printer upon approval. So once that happens, we'll fly it to press as fast as possible. We did, we did, per the board discussion at our last meeting, we made some updates and some changes that were requested. So we're ready to go, took, you know, several other eyes running through it just to make sure page numbers were accurate and whatnot. So there's that in terms of the delivery, right, and the distribution. It is also a requirement for all of our staff and our principals will be going over some of the policies, the school board policies during Welcome Back Week, so that they're aware of it. This will be presented at the Welcome Back Week II staff as well, in their individual buildings. So they're going to have, be able to have more conversations about, you know, depending on the age of the students, whether they're five-year-olds, all the way up to high schoolers, what kinds of conversations they can have with this book. Some pieces, so for example, at Columbia Academy, in their binder, their avid binders and their, you know, student planners, they're adding some pieces in there that they want all students to have. So you're right, not every single student will have the full 44-page book, but principals are, you know, pulling excerpts out so that students will have, based on their developmental appropriateness.
Thank you.
I think that's a good question. How do we make it most useful? You did all the hard work. How can we put it in the right hands, get people to read it, tell the parents that we're, we care about how their student is treated and, yeah.
No further discussion. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next up is...
Thank you.
Thanks, Xena. The employee handbook.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly tonight, sorry. I was here at the August 8th school board meeting and presented the employee handbook as an informational item. As I stated, there was very few updates to the handbook this year. It was just more contact information, policies that had to be updated. The next step is, once it's board-approved, we'll disseminate to staff, have them sign an acknowledgement form, making sure that everybody understands what they need to follow under the employee handbook. So today, I'm here seeking approval of the 18-19 handbook.
Clear with the motion.
I'm off.
Lori?
Second.
Molly, the second. Discussion. Questions, comments? Lori? Hearing none. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is the clerical contract. I'm ready.
Okay.
I was just waiting for somebody to start.
We were all looking at you. So...
Chair Larkin, members of the board. I'm Karen Keppel, here to present all three contracts for Local 284 that have tentative agreements. And if it's, if it's all right with the board, I would suggest presenting the clerical, custodial, and food service in summary together, because so much of it is the same, and then point out where there are differences.
Is okay with that?
That's okay. Might save you all some time and make it a little bit more streamlined. First of all, for the first time, these bargaining units asked for a three-year contract, which we agreed to, to do. And as, I guess I should preface my comments with the fact that, as you all know, we have discussed previously in a couple of closed sessions, the negotiation strategy for all of these units, so this is not new information. But you do have, I think, in your packets, the tentative agreements with all the changes noted in yellow. And, and the first thing is that it's a three-year term. Each of the three contracts would have a 2% increase to the salary schedule in each of the three years. And for the custodial contract, they would also have the same increase to their differential pay for licensure and things like that, that they have, boiler's license, for example. Health insurance, all of these contracts have the, what we've called the Me Too clause. So whatever the teachers have in terms of health insurance contributions by the district, these three contracts have as well. And that'll be the same in these contracts for the next three years. All three contracts will have one additional paid holiday. It varies a little bit as to whether it's a floating holiday, as in the case of the custodial, or New Year's Eve Day for the food service. And clerical was also New Year's Eve Day.
No, they're floating, too.
Pardon me?
They're floating, too.
They're floating, too. Okay, so two floating and a New Year's Eve Day. And the reason is because of the staffing needs that are different amongst the three bargaining units. But the economic impact to all three contracts is the same. Then we also had some language, minor language changes. One is a clarification of the pay that is based on the 261-day work year. Since some days are actually 260 days and some are 261 days, we added language to each of the three contracts to clarify that they would be paid based on the 261-day year. We also added language, which is not a new benefit, but it hasn't been in the contracts before about the VIBA. And that simply reflects actual practice, and it needed to be in the contract, as opposed to just in a human resources policy. The next change is to change the sick leave conversion payout to be in compliance with recent changes to the Internal Revenue Code. So it doesn't change their benefit, it just updates it to make sure there weren't any, what are known as constructive receipt problems for immediate taxation. So those are some kind of technical changes in all three contracts. And then for the clerical contract, I just want to call out three things, minor changes. One is a date change from February to May as the deadline for when an employee is able to seek a position classification change. And then the next one is, for clerical only, is their current contract says that in the event of a school closing, there, if they had a previously approved leave, say, for example, somebody had applied for a personal leave day, and as it turns out, on that particular day, there was a, a snow emergency or some kind of a snow, a, a closing for an emergency. Under the current language, they would still be deducted that personal leave day, even though they didn't actually use it and everybody else was off. So we've agreed to alter that language so that they would not be penalized and have that day deducted when it was actually a school closing. And then the final one, that's just for clerical, is there have been circumstances where a coworker might, as the contract currently says, cover for another person who's out sick or something, and they might be asked to do those, perform those duties as well as their own on that particular day. And the current language in the contract says that if, if that work is being done in excess of two days, they would get the higher category pay. And the... And the unit had asked for changing that to be one day or more, and we agreed to do that because it seemed as if there were a number of circumstances where somebody actually was doing quite a bit of work on top of their own regular duties. And it was fairly burdensome and didn't feel quite fair. So, we agreed to make that change as well. And that is, that's really it. It wasn't a difficult process. It was pretty collaborative. And they really didn't come in with a lot of requests. And, you know, the 2% per year is what was actually included in the budget that you had previously approved. So, any questions?
Start with the clerical contract. We'll motion second and then open it for discussion or questions. So, for the clerical, looking for a motion, to move that forward.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Maddie? Any discussion, questions, comments regarding that specific contract?
All the other changes, I got to read the, well, I limited my reading to the yellow portion. So, I appreciate that. Thank you very much, because those are thick. But all those other portions fit within our budget. Also, the changes that would be made with terms of payout of sick leave, and it's not, cumulatively, it's insignificant where we should be.
Right. And the sick leave language change doesn't create any greater economic impact now than it would have without the change.
And I'm glad you answered about VIBA because I was like, oh, I wonder if that's new. Cumulatively, if that one knew, that would be a bigger price tag.
Yeah, I don't know when the VIBA was implemented, but it's been quite a few years.
I've been here 11 years, and it was here before I got here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can you define that for maybe the people that are listening?
The voluntary employee beneficiary...
Account?
Account. Yes, yes. It is a method of accessing the health insurance for employees if they should choose to utilize a VIBA as opposed to another method. But all employees in the district have that opportunity. It just wasn't in their contract. So, again, it's not a substantive change. It's just putting into the contract what is currently in practice.
Good question. Anybody else?
I have one.
Yeah, please.
And obviously, as you're bringing them to us, these contracts were, for lack of a better word, approved by the parties that...
Yes. All three have been ratified by the bargaining units. I don't know the percentages, but I think it was pretty significant. Do you happen to know?
Usually, they don't always tell us that. They just say it's a go and they bring it forward.
But they were not controversial, and they have been ratified by the bargaining units.
And it's wa, sorry. You feel like, it's wise, you think it's wise to go with a three-year contract? Because traditionally, it's been a two-year contract?
Right. We did discuss that and whether or not there's enough certainty in the funding. And of course, you never know what the state is going to do. But the 2% is a pretty reliable figure that's been used for quite a few years now. And we don't anticipate that there's going to be any significant change.
Okay.
Anyone else? So, we've got a motion on table for approval of the clerical contract. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The motion carries. The custodial contract, if you gave a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Lorian? Any discussion regarding that contract?
Assuming answers are all similar to the ones we just asked.
They would be the same.
Okay, all right.
All right, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. And then the child nutrition contract, a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Maddie? Was it you, Molly, for a second? So, Maddie for a motion, Molly for a second. Discussion or questions? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That motion carries as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is the Canvas Returns of the School District's School Board Primary Election Resolution. Go ahead.
Larkin, members of the board. I'm here today to present the abstract for the elections that occurred on August 14th. The top six winner, vote-getters, will be going on to the general election on November 6th. The names are in the resolution.
Let me just go ahead and read that. Then we'll start with a motion to move that resolution forward. And if the Senate, I'll read it once we get that going.
So moved.
Lorian, for a motion?
Second.
Maddie, for a second. And the resolution is as follows. Resolution to Canvas School Board Election Results. Be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 13, State of Minnesota, that is hereby found determined and declared that the primary election of the voters for the district held on August 14, 2018 was, in all respects, duly and legally called and held. And at said election, a total of 5,199 electors of the district voted on the question of choosing twice the number of individuals to be elected as nominees for election as school board members for four-year terms, of which 1,851 voted for Hala Samrai, 1,773 voted for Molly Lewis, 1,424 voted for Laura Palmer, 1,331 voted for Mike Nowitzki, 964 voted for Joanna Stark, 953 voted for Janet Kendall, and 821 voted for William Gauthier. There were zero write-ins and 139 spoiled ballots. Hala Samrai, Molly Lewis, Laura Palmer, Michael Nowitzki, Joanna Stark, and Janet Kendall, having received the majority of such votes, are hereby declared elected as nominees for election as school board members. That's the resolution. Questions? Discussion?
I think probably because many people are watching the website at the Secretary of State Department. It might just benefit for the, anyone who's watching to kind of hear the explanation of why the numbers bounced around so much. Are you able to help us with that?
Yes, I am. Anoka County Elections has claimed the error, is their error in coding of the officials. So, when the numbers were transferred to the Secretary of State website, they were given to the wrong candidate. The numbers were never wrong in the election ballots. There are things, you know, in the tapes and stuff like that. I've seen the tapes. They're just fine. It was just that initial reporting because of a coding error. So, that was obviously found out quite quickly and corrected. There were four cities affected and one school district. Guess who?
And that coding error only affected what we were seeing on the Secretary of State's website.
Correct.
It was not, had we been witnessing ballots, it wouldn't, we wouldn't have known that that was the issue if we were physically present as they were counting ballots.
Correct.
Okay. And do we have any other reason to object to this number?
No.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, can you do the roll call from there?
Yes, I can.
Okay, just checking me, for logistically.
Multitasking.
So, for the record, this is a resolution, so I'll need a roll call vote to approve.
Palmer?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Don. Next, or last up, is board topics. Anybody have anything for board topics?
I wrote down the open house dates in case anyone DVRs this and fast-forwards through the exciting part just to get to this moment. Looks like...
Did we add times to those? Do you know, the high school was 2 to 6?
Okay.
So, they, if you're curious as to what the times are for the open houses, because they have them on the district website. The only one I think I remember seeing because it impacted me was the high school was 2 to 6 on the 30th.
Yep.
Something like that.
Board night, board night.
So, check the website to get those times. But that's all there. We'd love to have people...
CA is August 28th, and it looks like the high school and the elementary is on the 30th. Is that right?
The other way around.
Other way around? Did I get that backwards?
That was right.
That was right, okay. Yep.
Yep, 28th is the middle school.
Middle school, yep.
I will change that in my calendar. Anybody else for board topics?